...the best next step. That's what we're focusing on, yeah. Studying it up. So, Phil. Phil. We did agree that that's 31% voting from the ladies, so. And then, the way to party is.
I think you are, Mr. Kennedy. You are, Mr. Kennedy. Oh, yeah, okay, I was gonna call you after. I wanted to talk to you. I have a, I have a, have you talked to that? No. Yeah, we haven't had you on. I mean, we don't. Oh, I thought you were trying to, I, uh, yeah. Pretty simple. They can make a follow-up. That's, that's their biggest city. This is their biggest city. Yep. There's also, uh, M F. They get, but, uh. Well, we have. Really, and 31%? Yeah. But if it loves. Maybe we got someone. Yeah, I think that's. So far, the public has a, because of litigation, they've been asking. And so, who knows? They're not gonna. The question is, is. Well, I wanna see what it would be for. That's why I'm making a question. What Allo says to his recommendations. Maybe the logical next step is to do both, rather than. He does agree to have them for a session. When he, when he gets. I know, so. The last, the last you sent, you know, I just said I shouldn't. But I'm just. Let me introduce you to Juan. So, we give you a, you know, like, yes. This is Eric. Who's not going over there? Okay.
Does match. My concerns.
Where's Martin?
He was here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody ready? All right, well, good evening and welcome to the Federal Way City Council Special Meeting. We've got several items to attend to, but before we do so, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome. All right, so, we're here for the special study session for November 21st. First, we'll have a study session regarding ordinances regarding small cell deployment in the right-of-way. We'll walk through a staff presentation, and then, after we get through that and several citizen comments and council discussion, then we'll move to the study session for the 2018 legislative agenda, and we'll have a staff report and then, an opportunity for citizen comment and some feedback. All right, with that, Mark Orthman, Assistant City Attorney, please.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor and Council Members. As the mayor said, my name's Mark Orthman, I'm the Deputy City Attorney. Tonight, I'm just serving as an, to introduce our outside counsel, Scott Snyder, and I've been working with Scott Snyder over the past year and other members of his firm to, to work through how we're going to be approaching new technology that will be, you'll be seeing in the right-of-way in the next year or two. So essentially, this is coming back, and we've brought this to you before, our, the small cell technology, and we've been working on both interim land use ordinances and folding the new technology and the new provisions into our existing telecommunications regime, and Scott's here to, to walk through all of that with you, and we'll both be available for any questions after he walks through his presentation.
All right, welcome, Scott.
Thank you, and thank you, Council Members, Mayor. As noted, we've, you've had a brief introduction, but let's, let's look at the why first before we talk about the what. Dropping the weight of ordinances on you that we have this evening, that first introduction, what I hope to do tonight is to give you a lens to review the ordinances, so you understand the structure of what we're trying to do and the powers that we're looking to emphasize for the city's use. The why. As we've reviewed with you before, there's an exponential growth in the use of wireless devices. They're no longer the flip phone. Eighty percent of the data that is transmitted through smartphones is video these days. They're, they have a use not just for entertainment, but for business and a wide variety of purposes. The growth and demand reflects what your citizens are using. I have a DIY network habit, I spend way too much time watching them, and if you have that same habit, you may have seen the ads where the guy's sitting at the basketball game and looking at burglars approaching his house, or you may have seen the refrigerator that you can check your phone and see what's in your fridge. Those, those uses, use this technology, and they assure that this technology and the small cell deployments are gonna be serving not just business areas, high school parking lots, but every residential neighborhood in the city. Your citizens will have a use for the technology. American business is a very thoughtful at developing a need, and there are any number of products, from autonomous cars, again, to the TV you can check when you're at the grocery store, for use by your citizens. These, by the way, the charts that I'm running through were provided by the industry. We've been working with industry representatives, several are here tonight. After the draft is introduced to you, we're going to be sending it out for review to industry representatives to get their comments. You're familiar, I'm sure, with the macro cell technology. Small cells are a different technology that provide additional density of, for data use. You may have a signal on your phone, but you may not be able to stream that video. Your current ordinances have provisions regarding macro cells or lattice towers, and one of the things, as you review the ordinance drafts, to understand, is that we're wrapping small cell deployment procedures around your existing provisions, which are land use provisions to deal with micro cells and towers. So, we're not reinventing the wheel, we're using the policy work and the citizen input that has been developed in this city in the past. Small cells divens, densify networks, so the towers provide the RF radiation that's used, but the density to allow smartphone use effectively is provided by small cells. Small cells are defined by state statute, they're basically an antenna, not more than three cubic feet, with an equipment cabinet. The equipment enclosure itself is limited by the state definition to seventeen cubic feet. Small cell facilities are exempt from SEPA. And as this notes, again, they're a way of making the towers more effective and useful to the citizens. This is a typical small cell deployment. This is atop a city light pole in Seattle, it's the panel antennas that you see at the top. You can see the, the drawing, you can see the equipment enclosure on the side, which is actually, in this case, screened by a banner. There's a before and after of a simulation for the city of Bellevue. These are light pole deployments for downtown areas, but the more typical deployment, particularly in residential neighborhoods, is gonna be atop utility poles. The FCC has identified utility poles as a resource for the deployment of small cells. That creates a really interesting situation for most cities in that, for years, cities have been using their tax dollars, citizens' dollars, and their efforts to take utilities Because of the nature of small cell technology, it must be above ground to work. I'm gonna skip that, that one's already outdated. One, point two, I mentioned wrapping the small cell deployment procedures, administrative procedures, around your existing land use procedures. The other thing to bear in mind is that, no matter how vigilant you are, it's likely that sometime within the next six months or a year, we'll be back making changes to the ordinance. Both the FCC and the state legislature are considering, FCC's considering a petition, the state legislature has utilized a lot of time in the last session and promises to discuss again the issue of pole attachment agreements and city's ability to regulate small cells in the right-of-way. I think one thing to consider, and we'll talk about it in terms of how your ordinance is intended to work, is, one, these are deployments in the public right-of-way. The public, the city is the steward of the public right-of-way, and for years, the Washington courts have given great deference to city council decisions, whether they're contracting decisions about how to use the right-of-way, or what should go in and the timing of the use of the right-of-way. As you know, utility work in the right-of-way, as long as it doesn't interfere with your street construction and is properly timed and done, is something that's typically a staff function, and the ordinance structure intends to utilize that structure. Land use, because of the great bargain that the Grant, Growth Management Act made with citizens and developers, is labor-intensive. There are a lot of time limits, there are appeals internally. The, it's not well-suited to looking at small cell deployments except in very narrow situations. The FCC has enacted, they're called shot clocks, they're presumably reasonable time limits that cities have to act on various wireless communication facilities, applications, and in expansion of a existing facility, it can be as short as sixty days, and you can easily understand how that doesn't really work through the city's conditional use process and your hearing examiner process. Right-of-way use is not a land use action under the terms of the Growth Management Act. It's, we suggest in the ordinance draft, reserves land use for the really tough situations. New poles, and particularly new poles in undergrounded neighborhoods. If you're a citizen and you and your neighbors have spent a good deal of your money to underground your neighborhood, having new poles go up is, is an issue, you'd want those poles to be as effective and as, and use the least intrusive technology possible. There are other play, areas, potentially, design zones, you've put a lot of money into your streetscape and how your city looks, particularly along certain corridors, and you need to be able to preserve that. Shorelines, critical areas are another example where greater scrutiny should be required. As you review the ordinances, again, I'm dropping a weighty bundle of material on you for review, the lens that I'd suggest you could use as you look at them is to understand that we're using the city's franchising powers. Those powers that you get great deference from the court in exercising as the basis for your action. New, if a new franchisee comes in and wants to deploy small cells and, and use your right-of-way, the facilities ideally would be identified, along with the nodes or initial rollout area, as a part of the franchise process. That would be something that you would approve, there's a hundred and twenty days under state law to do so. It gives a, a good period of time for negotiation and work with the particular carrier to get the best possible design. Once approved as a part of a franchise, minor deviations are gonna occur, every pole is It's, many utility companies are requiring replacement poles as a matter of course. Get somebody else to pay for a new pole, makes sense from a business point of view, but we need a effective process that doesn't overburden the city to review and allow access to the right-of-way for those facilities that have already been approved as the part of the franchising process. Significant variations or new poles in areas such as a sensitive area, a design district, or an undergrounded area, need more significant review, and they would be forwarded to your hearing examiner process, understanding that all approvals will be subject to the federal shot clocks. The right-hand side of this chart looks to entities that may wanna use the technology that already have a franchise with you. Comcast is an example of an entity that is well-aware of the competition they have for the entertainment dollar, and are beginning in many cities to put out or to deploy their own small cell network. You may, your phone company may have offered you, you know, if you'll re-up with us, we'll give you Lifetime HBO or Lifetime Netflix, you've, you've seen that, again, taking advantage of the technology. But the process that we're looking at uses the same administrative permit process for those entities that have approved franchises with you, so that they can work their way through the similar process. Again, significant variations or new poles from, there are variations from the design standards that eventually will be reviewed by your, or developed by your planning commission, would go through that same process. When you look at the materials that have been provided, you'll note that they come in basically two wrappers. One are franchising ordinances and right-of-way use permitting provisions that are administrative, they're complicated, but they're fairly straightforward. They're, will come to you for adoption in standard ordinance format. The land use provisions are intended as an interim ordinance, which, like a moratorium, is a tool permitted under the Growth Management Act for a period of six months or one year within an adopted work plan. Why? Well, one, we want to make sure that the, these provisions, which mesh together, are in place in a timely way, so that the, again, the state legislature can understand that cities are making every effort to move forward and accommodate this new technology. But also, as I mentioned, it's highly likely that the FCC and the state legislature will tweak the current requirements, which will require you to come back and look at it. So, it makes sense to allow the, the planning commission adequate time to consider those special situations, the design districts, your downtown core, a historic district, should you choose to identify one, and, and the undergrounded areas, what kind of design standards are appropriate for those areas. This, the format that we're using gives the planning commission greater time to develop those more intricate, to take citizen input and come back with a thoughtful approach that doesn't overburden a technology that needs to be deployed, but at the same time takes your citizens' concerns into account. The franchise application, as I mentioned, it's gonna identify the location and the, the types of facilities to be used, negotiated, a hundred and twenty days to come back to council. The main thing is, courts view the approval of a franchise as a legislative act, and they give you enormous deference in review of your decisions. Some key concepts, as you look at the ordinance, it incorporates the federal shot clocks in new chapter 4.24. It brings a new franchise application process that tightens completeness review and provides an, a, an outlet for citizen comment, probably aware that outside of the public hearings, you're required to have, to consider a franchise at two meetings. The public typically doesn't get involved in franchise consideration. It's, again, there aren't hearings, it's not a land use matter. This ordinance, however, makes sure that the facilities that are gonna be deployed will be on the website and that there'll be an opportunity for the public to review and comment on those as they go forward. As those of you who've been on the council and have, are experienced, understand, this is, this coming back as a contract means that you can talk to any citizen you want about anything you want, you can consider your personal experience. If you've ever been involved in a land use process, you know that those are all no-no's. You know, you must consider what's only in the record, you have to reveal ex parte communications. By utilizing a franchising legislative process, you're able to communicate more directly with your citizens and use the common sense that God gave you. It, the ordinances, let's go back, oh, well, the ordinance encourages the use of existing utility poles, again, they're a, a resource for deployment, it discourages new poles, the sections are there, it retains the existing macro tower provisions that have been in your place and are working, again, following that old principle, if it's worked, don't, if it's working, don't fix it, and reserves the greatest scrutiny under the Ninth Circuit, the federal circuit test, that is, is there a significant gap in coverage and is the least intrusive means being used to close it for new poles and significant deviations from standards. The, just note, this is a technical thing that we'll talk about later, but with small cells, there won't be a gap in coverage, but there may be a need for additional data density. It's a slightly different issue, but one that we'll talk about. That's the quick and dirty. Thank you.
All right, Council, any questions? Councilmember Estefan Dawson.
Thank you. My biggest questions are on security.
Surely.
Because even now, you know, there are some concerns with, with our cell phones and data breaches and stuff, so how does that protect the security of, of the, whatever we use?
You know, I think the short answer is, it's not addressed in the ordinance. Those are, those security issues are industry issues, they're for the FCC. The city's prohibited from steering to certain kinds of technologies, and you're required to have a, a level playing field for all the companies. I, while I understand the issue you raised, and it's a genuine consumer concern, that's one for the FCC and not for the city council.
Okay. Oh, and then, you talked about Seattle and Bellevue?
Yes.
You know, you used those as examples. Do you have, are there other cities that have already passed an ordinance or are utilizing this currently?
I appear at a different city council meeting once or twice a week. The I-5 corridor is under great, there are a large number of applications pending and interest. The area, again, Tacoma to Everett, in, in your city, is right in the middle of it, are ones that there are being emphasized. Again, we've got Verizon representatives in the crowd tonight, and, again, their, the applications are either pending, or we've been working real closely with the industry, and they've been thoughtful about waiting to file applications until we have a new, more appropriate process in place.
Thank you.
All right, Council, any more questions? Deputy Mayor Burbridge.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. I'm wondering, though, the, there are some specific areas mentioned that might need, or might have some exceptions, for example, undergrounded areas, new poles, shorelines, critical areas.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you elaborate on those issues?
Surely. What we're, the ordinances generally look to low-hanging fruit, if you will, that is, existing poles in the right-of-way, in areas that are not historic or where you have an adopted streetscape plan. So, in those cases, those will be administrative permits issued, like right-of-way use permits after a franchise is approved. The situations we're describing, you're, that you've highlighted, the more delicate ones, will be kicked over to the same land use process that's currently used for citing macro towers, the big towers. Hearing examiner review, land use input, it would be subject to shorelines considerations as, as appropriate, and where appropriate SEPA. Again, small cells in the right-of-way on existing poles are SEPA exempt, other facilities outside the right-of-way are not. So, they would go through all of the existing land use processes. Again, we've, we've preserved the thoughtful policy decisions that the council and planning commission have made in the past with regard to the large-scale facilities, and are routing those more problematic applications to that same process.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, Council, anything else? Deputy Mayor Burbridge.
Thank you again. Had you planned to go into the data density, or is that for a later?
The data density, oh, what, how the small cells actually operate, I mean?
Well, you mentioned data density.
Oh, sure.
Where it's needed, an issue.
Exactly. I think the major, as smartphones have evolved, and I could defer to any of the industry reps if you'd be interested, but as small, as smartphones have evolved from a telephone to a entertainment device, basically a small computer, the amount of density that's needed for them to operate has, has grown exponentially. And in one of the earlier slides, you may have noted the micro tower and then the small cell facilities in the areas where they're needed. Where are they needed? High school parking lots, downtown areas where buildings may block or create a shadow so that the macro tower doesn't work. As I noted, it, just in the year and a half that I've been working with the issue, you see expanding use of autonomous cars. There's gonna be a need for small cell facilities throughout the community, and the, the reason is, again, you may not want, you don't wanna drop call, you, it would be irritating if you're watching your favorite show on Netflix and it's, starts stuttering, but if you're an autonomous vehicle and it loses contact with, you know, the, the, the small cell network, you're in big trouble. So, the, the idea is to fill in the blanks that inevitably arise between the macro towers, and to ensure that all those devices work at the appropriate speeds in every part of the city. The, as was noted to me, I was arguing, not arguing, I was having a discussion, how's that, with an industry rep the other day, about just how many antennas you needed on a pole, and she made the point, which I think is very true, is these are expensive facilities, they're not being put out there just High school parking lots, downtown areas where buildings may block or create a shadow so that the macro tower doesn't work. As I noted, just in the year and a half that I've been working with the issue, you see expanding use of autonomous cars. There's going to be a need for small cell facilities throughout the community. And the, the reason is, again, you may not want, you don't want to drop call, you, it would be irritating if you're watching your favorite show on Netflix and it starts stuttering, but if you're an autonomous vehicle and it loses contact with, you know, the, the small cell network, you're in big trouble. So the idea is to fill in the blanks that inevitably arise between the macro towers and to ensure that all those devices work at the appropriate speeds in every part of the city. The, as was noted to me, I was arguing, not arguing, I was having a discussion, how's that, with an industry rep the other day about just how many antennas you needed on a pole, and she made the point, which I think is very true, is these are expensive facilities. They're not being put out there just to irritate citizens or cause concerns. They're there because consumers need or demand the services that the small cells provide. Is that helpful?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Copeng.
Scott, thanks for your presentation. I know we went through a lot of this in the Land Use and Transportation Committee, but it's good review. Question I had, I noticed some municipalities, the macro towers end up kind of being camouflaged, and we haven't done anything like that, but is there, is there any, any discussion industry-wide on concealing these micro towers so they are less, they're kind of blend in to the communities that they're in, the neighborhoods they're in?
Good question. You'll note that the ordinances contain a provision for a concealment plan. That would be triggered in the problematic areas that the deputy mayor asked about. If you're going to be putting a new facility in an undergrounded neighborhood or in your downtown core where you wanted to blend in with your ornamental light fixtures, the, or the, again, any of those other problematic situations, the applicant would need to develop a concealment plan, take maximum advantage out of a variety of techniques. The, you know, there's, there's, many communities, you, well, I'm stuttering here because you probably don't want the fake Saguaro cactus on 320th, but you might want an ornamental light pole. And the process that we're using of having, you know, 120 days of thoughtful discussion about what would be appropriate, I, in meetings with the industry, they've been very thoughtful. They have a big catalog of light, light poles and fixtures, not just the big gray goose-neck light fixtures, but also ornamental light poles, and they buy their equipment from the same place that you buy your ornamental light standards. So having the cabling interior to the light standard, utilizing techniques like, one of my favorites is the trash can that's a trash can on top and the equipment cabinet underneath is a very good technique for a downtown area in a walking neighborhood or a shopping district. So there is a concealment plan required, again, in those problematic situations.
So, so above ground doesn't mean 10 feet up, it can be a foot up or six inches up.
Well, this, these facilities need, they use microwave radiation, they need to be 20 to 40 feet in the air to work properly. They're, on the existing light standards, they'll either be at the top of the pole or in what's called the communication space.
I must have misunderstood you. I thought you were saying that they were, they would utilize the antenna in a, the base of a garbage can.
Oh, I'm sorry, the equipment, there's, there's a good bit of equipment that's associated.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, the, the actual antennas themselves, that's line of sight communication, they need to be up in the air and aimed at the next antenna.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate it, we appreciate it. And then we may have some citizen comment. So at this time, what we'll do is, we've got this opened up to citizen comment. Is there anybody who would wish to comment on this? Please come on up. Thank you, Scott.
Hi, my name is Leela Vaga, and I'm a network engineer with Verizon Wireless. And I just really wanted to thank the city for taking up this topic, and I'm sorry, my notes were buried. I think Scott's presentation was a pretty darn good overview of small cells, and Octa Murphy Wallace has certainly done a lot to engage the industry in this, and I'd like to thank him and Octa Murphy Wallace for that. Just a couple of quick statistics to illustrate the need for this. In 2016, mobile data use was 35 times the volume of traffic it was in 2010, and the average smartphone in 2015 used 3.7 gigabytes of data per month. That's expected to increase nearly sixfold by 2021 to 22 gigabytes per month. So just the way we use our phones is increasing dramatically, but it isn't just our phones. Machine-to-machine connections are projected to increase from 36 million in 2013 to 263 million in 2018. So when you think about that, it's the fact that our phones are now the remote controls for our lives and that things that we never thought were, would be wireless are now wireless. And that goes from telecommuting to, you know, smart cars and videos get a lot of attention, but when you think about how you are using your devices, I personally have a smart home security system where I can check my home when I'm at work, a light bulb that is on the internet that I can turn on and off. My husband got a sleep apnea device, and it's one of the many medical devices that are now getting connected to the internet. Seventy-six percent of all 911 calls are on, on mobile phones, and first responders use computers connected to mobile data in their vehicles and on their person to respond in their situation. So I, I just wanted to say that this is really more and more about how we are living our lives and where we are evolving as a society in terms of our connection to data, and provide you with that perspective on exactly how dramatic this is. So aside from that, I am a network engineer. If you have any specific technical questions, I'd be happy to answer them, either tonight or down the road, and just really thank you again for addressing this, we really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Those are great statistics, it's absolutely fascinating that, that somebody, as you're sleeping, somebody can watch, you know, the, the real-time data about the, whether you're actually sleeping or not. It's, and just all of the, how it just infused in all of our lives, it's rapidly changing. Councilmember DuKlo.
Yeah, it is amazing at what, what's going on out there and what the future is. However, I do have a caution to it. While we're developing all these things that can run our lives and get into our houses and everything, there's hackers out there that are also getting into these devices and getting into your lives and getting into your houses, so I think we need to be a little concerned about how much we put into a lot of this stuff. No matter how safely you make it, somebody else is going to figure a way to get into it. That's, that's just my concern. I just think we're putting too much into devices and instead of being human beings and talking to each other.
Very good, thank you. Council, anything else? All right, thank you very much. John, John Riesing.
This topic is not why I'm here, I didn't know this topic was going to be on the agenda. But I'm John Riesing, I live in one of those communities that has underground utilities, and I can tell you that earlier this fall, I was communicating with the Federal Way to Police Department about the question of whether our neighborhood association might take some initiative with respect to neighborhood-based security systems using this kind of microcell technology. What I learned was that the equipment required to make available the kind of functionality that I had in mind that prompted the questions is probably outside the community budget at this moment, but that it's a rapid decline in price curve as in all other things electronic. And so one of the questions, for example, if a neighborhood association were to make an application under the ordinance you're about to contemplate, they would probably do it as a franchisee, and what is the council policy going to be about how much you would charge my association to put a microcell network on light poles, because we certainly can't afford to put up any new freestanding cell towers, okay, which an underground neighborhood would require. So as I say, when you're, when you're reviewing the, the ordinance, I ask you to think about what encouragement you might be giving to neighborhood associations to take advantage of technology like this and do things in their neighborhood other than what just the carriers would do, and what the city might do. Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. Evening, thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, we've got about 15 minutes before our council meeting starts, we need to move on to our next item, which is the study session for the 2018 legislative agenda. At this time, I'll move over to, let's have Aaron Flygar from Advocates Incorporated, he's our city lobbyist, our contract lobbyist, and also our, our senior policy advisor, Yarden Widenfeld, who's been assisting with the, with the assistance of council and staff and other folks that we've communicated out in the public about different priorities that we have, we've got our legislative priorities. So what we anticipate is a staff briefing right now, citizen comment, council discussion, and then we are also anticipating a legislative breakfast, and we'll, we had sent out a communication to the council earlier about, about a month prior to the legislative session to get together with, assuming we get a finalized product on December 5th at the next council meeting, once that passes, we're thinking maybe a few days after that, a legislative breakfast, we'll bring in the senator and our two state representatives, and, and also have representatives for the school district there. That way, we can, once we get finalized, we can move toward getting some real progress on these legislative items. That's the plan, so at this point, I'll turn it over to Aaron and Yarden.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Aaron Flygar. Yarden and I are going to kind of take, take team this thing with some slides, and I know John's going to hop up here at the very end and talk about something, so I'll turn it over to Yarden to do that.
Thank you. So I know that all the current council members have been through this process before, so you're certainly familiar with this. The first slide here just has some general background on what you're probably already all familiar with. The second slide will go through eight specific areas that the mayor is recommending be part of the agenda, and then each individual slide will go through one of those eight areas. So just on this first slide, the background, on an annual basis, the City of Federal Way produces a list of state legislative priorities based on the interests of the City of Federal Way and its residents. Working with the city's contract lobbyist, Mr. Flygar to my left, the mayor's office produced this draft of the City of Federal Way 2018 State Legislative Priorities for City Council: Consideration and Input. This year's legislative priorities specify areas of interest for the city during the 2018 legislative session and include solutions for issues facing Federal Way. This document is intended to guide the city's lobbying activities and identified priorities focused on potential legislation and potential funding requests in the areas of law enforcement, municipal improvement, education, homelessness, and governmental reform. So the eight specific areas that, that we identified are, as it says there, law enforcement and public safety, the PAC, the Performing Arts and Events Center, the former Wirehauser IRG property in Northlake, and I would note that the president of Save Wirehauser Campus, Lori Seacrest, is here, along with several other members of that group that are interested in this issue. The fourth is freshwater algae control, and I'm sure in public comment, we'll hear from Mr. Woolley, who we've heard from before on the issue of Lake Gene, as well as Tim Walls is here, who is the, part of the Lakes Committee that was recently appointed by the Twin Lakes Homeowner Association. The next area is education, the next, the university initiative, the next, shelter for homeless families, and then the next, support for amending RCW 53.54. And on that final issue, which has to do with the impact of air traffic on citizens of, of, of Federal Way, will be discussed by John Riesing, who's the chair of the mayor's Quiet and Healthy Skies Task Force. So the, the first slide will be on law enforcement, and I'll turn this over to Mr. Flygar.
So this is something that we had in our agenda last year, it's the, the Safe City Cameras, quarter million dollars to update and get some new ones in there. If you have any questions, let me know, but same thing we had last year.
Aaron, tell us about the capital budget stalled last year, what's it look like coming up?
So capital budget stalled last year, fight between Democrats and Republicans on some issues that didn't have anything to do with the capital budget, in my opinion, but it was the leverage that was had, so it's going to come back, you know, the, the Senate switch control, it's under Democratic control now, so they'll, they'll see, I know there's some folks that are really pushing for a special session towards the end of this month, really between November 30th and December 4th, there's a window there, but if it comes together, then we'll see. If not, they will get a capital budget done this year, and I'm pretty, pretty confident, you know, and all of our capital budget requests that we had last year going into this, we're still on the agenda for this year, they were in the compromised final budget, so I mean, I think we're in pretty good shape, so. So there's that one. The PAC, a million dollars for the kitchen, same one as last year. You know, we've gotten some pretty substantial money over the years for the PAC from the capital budget, so we've been very successful in doing that. The IRG Northlake property, it's very important to one of our legislators and to the local citizens right there and the constituents of the city. So that was also funded in the agreed-to capital budget at the end of last session, so we'll just keep, keep pushing it. There's Yarden.
So on this slide about freshwater algae control, as outlined in the Lake Gene report that was, that I presented in September to Councilman, Councilmember Copeng's committee, the Parks and Public Safety Committee, there's been an increasing problem of algae, particularly blue-green algae, also known as cyanobacteria, that on lakes that can release cyanotoxins. This has been an increasing problem, people think for the last number of decades, it's been increasing, likely due to increased development. Locally, the, the main area that we've seen this on is on the Twin Lakes and the Twin Lake Homeowner Association, Lake Lorraine and Lake Gene in particular. As I said, we have Mr. Woolley and Mr. Walls here that are from that area. So in 2005, the state legislature established a program under RCW 43.21A.667 that, that would address the issue primarily through grants to municipalities and other small government entities. One of those funded the Joe's Creek Study that was, that was discussed earlier this year, but it has been basically underfunded since being established. For instance, just as an example, in 2016, which is when the Joe's Creek Study was done, that grant was for 40,000, $49,920. That was one of only three grants awarded in the whole state, and the total amount of money awarded that whole year was $131,000, $131,420, and other years recently have been a similar amount of that. So back in October then, to the Parks and Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Copeng, I presented a one-page recommendation of what the city should do in follow-up to the research project that the mayor had me do on Lake Gene, that was fully presented in an over 80-page report, but the recommendations were in a one-pager, and one of those was that, that we include support for increased funding for these grants to address the growing problem of, of algae, particularly blue-green algae, in our legislative agenda. So that is what this item is about. I'll turn for the next slide over to Mr. Flygar.
So education, we always try and support the school district's legislative platform, the things that they want to do. So as you can see that here, fully fund education to meet the constitutional requirements, is outlined in McCleary. One of the updates of that is the Supreme Court recently came back and they said that, you know, the plan that they finally did after 18 special sessions over the course of the last four years wasn't sufficient enough. And it wasn't about the plan or the formula, but it was about the timing of which they're going to implement the funding for that formula, so the legislature's going to be tasked with coming up with a billion dollars this session, and that's a short 60-day session supplemental budget year, so I mean, that's a pretty substantial task for them to try and do, to come up with that billion dollars. There's about $2, $2 to $2.3 billion in the rainy day account, but we'd like to save that because who knows what's going to happen in the next couple of years. So it's going to be a big task for the legislature to come up with that billion dollars. Second bullet point, fully fund the cost of basic education and specifically compensation costs so that federally public schools continue to attract the best and the brightest. That's part of what this Supreme Court latest ruling was, was the timing to pay for those teachers to, to recruit the best possible, and fully fund the cost of transporting students who are homeless. And so that's a, you know, a long-term transportation services, it's a big funding issue down in Olympia, so.
And we, we shared our proposed legislative agenda with the school district and Tammy Campbell and her team, and that point about, we, we actually initially did not have the fully funding of transporter, transporting students who are homeless, and that, we added that at the request of Superintendent Campbell. Councilmember DuKlo.
Yeah, I've been asking this question all along, can, can, is there a definition for fully fund education? Is it first student, or is it teacher salaries, or is it, I just?
So it's universal.
I don't, you know, it's universal, I mean, we could just take the whole government budget and hand it over to the school districts. Would that be fully funded?
The definition of fully funded basic education, right, because that's what we're looking at, is basic education.
Yeah, basic education, yeah.
That's what McCleary was about, and so they came up over the course of the last five years with what that is, that formula, what that's supposed to be.
I mean, is it percentage per, per child, or so much per child?
I mean, it's a whole host of things, all, all gathered, and I am not, there's not too many people that are education funding experts in this world, I am not one of them.
I mean, just like it made, just like it made clear so that the rest of us who are not education or not into that whole thing could just understand what they're talking about.
Well, I'll reach out to the Superintendent of Public Construction's office. Well, I'll reach out to the Superintendent of Public Construction's office and I see if they have a quick little one-pager bullet point saying that I can get.
That would be wonderful. I would really appreciate that.
The state Supreme Court has outlined certain benchmarks. And I think that the court, actually even the governor's office, the governor thought that the budget, when it was passed, was well on the way. When the state Supreme Court just issued their 46-page decision, I believe it was last week or the week before, it was about implementation that was the key part and about making sure that they were on the right track. And so really, part of this is, is that they, the state Supreme Court definitely wants and is demanding that the legislature do this, you know, at some point before other punitive sanctions are going to be imposed. Obviously, they've been finding the legislature on a per-day basis, quite a bit. So then it's just a matter of what would be next if, but it sounds like the legislature is, you know, is committed to getting this accomplished. But I think you're right. That is actually at the court defining what that is.
Yeah, I think it would be very helpful for everybody to understand what the definition of fully fund is.
Well, the legislature.
Per student or whatever.
The state Supreme Court issued a 46-page decision. So I think somewhere in those 46 pages, I think it's probably a, it's complicated.
Well, I know it's complicated, it's very complicated, but still, to try and understand, I'm not arguing against it. I just think it would be helpful if we know how much money is going to that and is that going to be enough? Is it going to continue to increase every year? You know, I mean, I support the school system and teachers and everything like that, but I really would like a clear definition of this. And is it a 1% increase every year, a 10% increase every year? And where does that money come from?
Agreed. Thank you. The state Supreme Court has retained jurisdiction on this. And so we'll talk to Dr. Campbell and we'll see if we can get a one or two pager out. I think the legislature is trying to answer that question as well.
I think it would be nice for us all to try.
All right, thank you.
The university.
Thanks. So this initiative, as it says on the slide, the city of Federal Way completed a higher education needs assessment that shows a clear need for increased higher educational opportunities in the community of Federal Way. So we've been working with, the mayor earlier this year, I think it was in March or April, launched a committee, actually two committees, a facilities committee and a programming committee that consists of people from our office, particularly myself and our economic development director, Tim Johnson, along with officials from the University of Washington, Tacoma, Highline College, and also the Federal Way Public Schools, including Dr. Campbell herself, actually, as part of this, to start offering college courses here in Federal Way. So in support of that initiative, we are asking the legislature to fund a one-time startup budget request of $800,000. And this was actually, I've been kind of coordinating or facilitating, I guess you might say, meetings of this group every roughly six weeks or so. And it happened that we had a meeting of this group last Friday. And they, at that meeting, came up with a kind of a very rough draft budget that basically outlines about a little over $90,000 for rent, $312,000, a little more than that for tenant improvement, $196,000 for furniture fixtures and equipment. And then the idea was that, at least at the beginning, that only two additional staff people would be required, that lectures could be either professors that already exist could come up to the Federal Way, or it could be piped in through the internet and we'd only have to have teacher assistants up here. So it would require two additional staffers at start, a site manager and a site advisor. The site manager would handle all issues with the site, like technical support and so on. The advisor would be a shared position between Highline and UW Tacoma and would work across the programs, would understand the curriculum, would meet with students to make sure they're doing what they need to do, would be a liaison between Highline, UW Tacoma, and the public schools. Each position with benefits is looking at between $100 and $150,000. So the total budget that came up with was $800,000. So that is the amount that we are requesting for this item. Next, shelter for homeless families. As has been discussed here earlier this year, in January, Mayor Farrell established the Homeless Mothers and Children Initiative, HMCI, appointed Councilmember Susan Honda and Sherri Edwards, community activists, to co-chair it. The main object of that initiative was to address the lack of a shelter in Federal Way for homeless families with children. There are shelters for individuals, adult males and females, but none for families with children. Last week, the mayor hosted, and HMCI hosted a luncheon with faith-based leaders in Federal Way. 26 churches were represented, and that was just, really just the beginning. We followed up by sending a resource list that the co-chair Sherri Edwards put together of all resources in Federal Way and also requested inventory and what each of the religious institutions had to offer. That was sent not just to the 26 churches that were there at the meeting, but to over 200 contacts that we were able to find. And it appears that the faith-based community here is extremely eager and willing to partner with the city to address this really critical gap in services to the homeless here. The $100,000 grant would be a very good first start to basically help that partnership get off the ground and bear fruition to address that gap. So that's that item. The final item is about amending RCW 53.54, which has to do with the impact of air traffic. And as I think people know, earlier this year, Mayor Farrell appointed a group to the Quiet and Healthy Skies Coalition, Quiet and Healthy Skies Task Force, excuse me. And Citizen John Riesing has been working practically full-time as a volunteer on this project, and I'm going to actually ask him to present this item.
So I apologize if this map isn't very visible to the members of council, but it illustrates the problem. This map was produced by the city's Geographic Information Systems Group, which has been very helpful to us in our work. Chapter 53 of RCW governs ports in the state. And this particular provision that we're addressing was enacted in the early 70s, authorizing ports of a given size to engage in activities with respect to noise. And it was defined as a corridor six miles long, which if you see that shaded area there, basically ends at the northern boundary of Federal Way. So the proposal here is to broaden the authorization for the qualifying ports owning and operating airports, i.e. C-TAC, to engage in abatement, mitigation, monitoring, and research with respect to adverse impacts of airport operations. In other words, we are interested in changing the geographical limitation to eliminate it and to broaden the authority of the port to act on matters such as health impacts. And in connection with this matter, which, you know, was supported by the mayor early, you know, as soon as we brought it up, I have had discussions with members of the legislature from four different districts, both House and Senate. I have yet to have a legislator say that they weren't willing to support such a bill. We have had no discussion with the Port of Seattle yet, although they are well aware of this matter. The next step that we are taking is to work with our lead legislator in the matter and help me, Jim, Mike.
Palliciati.
Palliciati. Someday, I may learn how to pronounce that.
I'll check this weekend.
So in every case of a discussion with a legislature member, both senators and representatives, as I said earlier, they express support for the authorization. And their next question is, what's the details? And so our next step is to work with the Legislative Drafting Service to actually get bill language put together, and then we can carry forward on discussion with legislators. So I'm open to any questions, and anybody wants to meet with me and ask anything about Task Force, I'm always available to you.
Thank you, John. I think what we'll do is, we've got about a half hour before our regular meeting starts. What we're going to do is, I've got one yellow sheet for comment. We've got Bob Woolley to come up. My understanding is that's the end of the.
Yeah, let me just say that the map that Mr. Riesing was holding up, that if anyone, I can distribute that through electronic copy if people want to see that. And just the final slide, just the mayor's recommendation is that the council approve the city of Federal Way's 2018 state legislative priorities.
Okay. Thank you very much, Yarden, and thank you, Aaron, for your great presentation. This time, I'll call Bob Woolley up. And the regular three-minute limitations apply, and then we're going to have some council discussion. All right. Bob?
Mr. Mayor, deputy mayor, council, citizens. I am Bob Woolley. I have my incognito hat on tonight. The reason I am at the podium tonight, which is very familiar, is that the legislative agenda had freshwater algae recommendation on it, and I could not resist the opportunity to make a comment. I'm here. My name is Bob Woolley. I'm here as a resident of Lake Gene. I don't represent anybody else. I do not represent the Twin Lakes HOA, the club, but I'm a member of all those organizations. I'm here because I have the dedication, the fortitude, to see that the Lake Gene, Twin Lakes, the Twin Lakes, and Joe's Creek issue is resolved. And I have the means to do so. The 2018 legislative agenda is a long-term solution. Other than the city engagement, there's other entities that's working that issue very fervently. Near term, on the table of public works has been a request as to whether or not the city will ask for a grant to study the collected data for the atriographer's influence on Joe's Creek and therefore the Twin Lakes. Yarden and I have had conversation. We've had written exchanges about that. I've heard nothing from the city, other than Yarden, in regards to what y'all's intent is. A question from the council ought to be asked, will the city ask for a very small grant, which has been earmarked within DOE? And if not, why not? The atriographer is an influence that was not studied in the Joe's Creek effort, and it deserves the attention of the city and all the other parties that want a resolution. Mr. Mayor, thank you for this opportunity. I pledged not to come back, but I couldn't resist the opportunity.
We're glad you did, Bob.
Okay. And as Bob Woolley, a single resident of Lake Gene, thank you.
Very good. If time allows, I'll have Marwan Saloom address your quick question. We're working on it. We're considering it. But let's go ahead, let's make sure we've got a good discussion here on this legislative agenda. Time allows, we'll get back to it. Richard Pearson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, dedicated staff. I really appreciate that we've moved forward with the legislative priority to include the former Wirehauser property, the IRG property. But I urge you to consider broadening the perspective just a little bit beside the Northlake piece. We've talked about the value of other parts of that property for trail access to the bonsai Garden, the Rhododendron Museum downtown, and to the Northlake parcel. I have a, and I appreciate that we've got this and we're supportive of the Forterra effort on this. I would just suggest a simple sentence in addition to this and to, in addition to seek legislative acquisition support for open space and public access opportunities on the entire site, to not limit this to just the Northlake.
Richard, can you say that again?
Okay. Seek legislative acquisition support for open space and public access opportunities on the entire site. We've been told by a number of people, including Senator Malosha, that there potentially are other acquisition, money available in the legislature. We're not talking about buying the whole site. We're talking about trails and acquisition, perhaps some support for the continuation of the bonsai and Rhododendron Gardens. And so just broaden the perspective of that legislative attempt to see if Aaron can get involved a little bit more in terms of some of the other processes that would provide funding for us. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Richard. Great suggestion. We're going to present some language to council to consider for a possible amendment when this is on, and we're going to hear from council on their desirability of adding that language. I do know that Forterra, part of this is a big, part of this is to make sure that Forterra continues its work. And I know that Forterra is very focused on the bonsai garden and the Rhododendron garden, and they believe it's really part and parcel of the whole appeal and value of this property. So that's been a real focus. So is there anybody else from the public who'd like to talk to the council? Okay, seeing none, council? I see Councilmember Moore, and then Councilmember Honda and Councilmember Asafadasa.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. As always, I think we do a great job putting together a lot set of priorities. And thank you to Aaron for your hard work. I can indeed, I know that you do work hard, as I've seen it down there. I know I talk about this once every time we come together to put together a lot set of priorities, but I have seen you in action and I have worked alongside you. And I'm thankful that you're continuing to partner up with, well, work for us, essentially. So, you know, while this is a great document, some of the things that I would like to see in here, and I'm happy to work with Yarden and the mayor's office, is a drug, we have a drug epidemic problem, crisis. And I'd like to see this legislative priorities address that. And by that, I'd like to see and ask the questions to our police department, what additional tools do they need in terms of funding or whatnot that we can address that issue? Secondly, I am a, as I always have, I have advocated for people with disabilities, and I would like us to look at policies in that matter through this document as well. And I'm looking forward to talking with Yarden in terms of specifics. And third and final, Mr. Mayor, you know, now that we've, the Senate has changed, I would like us to see if we can add capital funds for solar panel funding for our Performing Arts and Events Center. I know that the building is, and I may use the wrong word here, but retrofitted.
Fitted.
What?
It's fitted.
It's fitted. Thank you. So I'd like us to, I'll look at funding opportunities for that as well. So those are just three. Of the three, I know that one of them, I need to be a lot more specific, and I'm willing to talk to Yarden about that as well. So that's something that I would like to. So, that's something that I would like to see added to this legislative priorities. With that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. Last year, we had 10 priorities, and can you tell us, or maybe not tonight, if you don't have time, what happened to some of those, like the community development, which was providing care, compassion, and referral for those in need, working with homeless people with drug issues, transportation issues, investing in public health services, the property tax cap. The others are pretty much the same. And I'd also like to know if we're going to rank these in priority of how, if there was limited funding, which it sounds like there could be, if they need more funding for education, of how, as council members, we would like to see these provided for funding, if we could rank them at some point?
Okay. So, the short answer is, is that this is a short session, this is not a budget session. So, in the biennium, this is, this is a non-budget year. So, one of the things that we've been taking a look at in regard to the homeless issues, we have, in the three-part plan of the homeless issues that we have addressed, one of which was the homeless encampment initiative, the second was the day center, of which we have provided $100,000 in funding, the third, of which you are the co-chair, as you will know, is HMCI, and we have identified the short-term and intermediate-term need of this community is to have shelter for homeless people, especially individuals with children where there's a gap. That's the $100,000 for HMCI and that housing. So, in regard to transportation, just in regard to this, again, it's a non-transport, it's a non-budget year, there's only so much in regard to, that we can, we've got quite a number of asks here, and this is a very aggressive agenda, and that is in our, we can certainly add a number of things in the budget year, a year from now, but this was what we came up with.
I'm not done. I'm not asking to add these things, I'm asking for a report on what happened to them last year, because I didn't hear what happened to them last year.
Okay. We'll have, Aaron, do you have those? Do you get, do you get the list of those items? All right. If you could send to the council, through me, a report on those items from last year, what happened to them? Okay?
And I understand that this is a non-budget year. What I'm asking also is if, as the council members, we could rank these things and what we would like to see budgeted or funded first, if we had to.
Okay. Actually, Councilmember Duclo, just for a quick question?
Yeah. Well, no, I want to comment on the Performing Arts and Events Center. I think we go in with the ask that we have right now. I don't think we make it any larger, because it is not a budget year, and this is something that's very important in here, and I don't think, because that's, so we can work with the martial shoots, because that's how we got the tax, the tax credits that we got. So, I think that's something that we go for, and we don't cloud it with anything else.
That's a, so we've got Councilmember Asafadass, and then Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Asafadass?
Thank you. So, with the education legislative priority, we have listed what we want in partnership with the public school, but since the school serves Kent Auburn and Des Moines, are there also, is this going to be part of their legislative priorities? And if not, would it help if they're a part of it? Just more of a question than anything.
We communicated this legislative agenda to the school district. They're on board with this. They had just the one addition, which was making sure that when we do help and put our shoulder behind their effort, that we advocate for the transportation of homeless children. Apparently, that's a very costly, they almost get to the point where they have to, not almost, they get to the point where they're literally ordering cabs for these students to be able to, as you know, to get them to place to place, and so, that was something. So, you know, certainly, I think the majority of the Federal Way School District is inside the City of Federal Way, they're our partners, and I can't really speak to what the other municipalities are doing, but we'll work hand in glove with the, with the school district. And I think that level of cooperation had never really traditionally been there. We were siloed, and I think that we, when we heard, what we heard in multiple legislative breakfasts going back three, four years ago was, they definitely wanted us to consider this and to really, you know, because there are, you know, 23,000 students as a population base, and, you know, almost all of those, many of those are Federal Way residents, and so.
I appreciate that we do have the partnership, it's very important, but also, are we going to have the legislative breakfast then, or is this...
We are. We're, we'd like to actually have it. I was, I was, and I think we sent out an email asking whether December 7th, December 7th, which would be the Thursday after our next council meeting, this will be, this will be on for consideration on December 5th, on Tuesday, two days later, and before we get too far into the month of December, it would be good to have that legislative breakfast. And that way, if we can come to an agreement on some of these items, when it gets passed, we can have our legislative delegation. Traditionally, and for as long as I was on the council, we actually had that legislative breakfast in January, and anybody who knows anything about the legislature knows that by the time you get to January, it's over, it's too late. These things are baked in well before that. Councilmember Duclo?
I humbly request you don't do it on December 15th.
Okay. Done. So...
It's my birthday.
We're thinking the 7th, but we're going to, I need you, what we'll do is, I'll have Kathy and Jerry Lynn send out our assistance, we'll send out those dates and times, and we're going to check to see if that works with our legislative delegation. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A clarification point here. So, when we're talking about capital budgets, we're only talking about the capital budget that was discussed in the last legislative session, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And therefore, there's no room to renegotiate now that there's a new senate in town, even though the capital budget has never been passed? How does that work?
What say you, Aaron?
So, so, it's still essentially the capital budget from last year, right?
Right.
And it doesn't sound like, from the intelligence that I have, that they're going to reopen it. There was kind of an agreed-to thing.
Okay.
They would pass that, but then there might be an additional bonding capacity in a supplemental capital budget, which would be this year also, so they would pass the biennial capital budget, and then also a supplemental one.
So, two quick questions. How realistic is it to add that new point, which I'm in favor of, Tammy Campbell's addition? And again, as I'm in favor of that point, how realistic is it to add that to? Is that a capital budget request, or is that an education?
The transportation of homeless students?
Yes, correct.
That's going to be a transportation, probably a transportation thing, that's what usual, people transportation is in that, in that funding formula. So, you know, it's a long-term thing, right? And in some of these items that we put on over the last couple of years, they're not just one-year, one-year deals.
Right.
They're long-term. So, that's a way to look at it.
And here's the way I really analyze this, everybody, is that the city has always, like, as I said just a few moments ago, we've always been very siloed in our approach to our requests, but we didn't really ever, really put our arm around the school district and say, we know you've got legislative asks, we're going to work the Hill and work the members. That's really what we're offering to do here. This is actually, this is the school district asks, and what we're at, what we're saying is, because schools are so integral to our community, we're really going to put our arm around the school district, because they are us, and we are them, that we're going to basically say, where you've got a bill on these issues, we'll go testify on it, we will go work the Hill and the senate and the house on your behalf, because they are us. And so, that's, that is something they've asked us to do previously and repeatedly, and that's something that I wanted to make sure, that we wanted to make sure that we had this as a legislative priority. Deputy Mayor Burridge?
Thank you. I'm particularly pleased regarding the education part of the proposed legislation priorities that the compensation costs are addressed, because I know there's been some disparity in the McCleary proposal, proposed funding. And I'm curious as to whether there would be a concern strategy-wise with, including Richard Pearson's proposed addition to the warehouse or property funding.
Could you say your question?
I'm wondering if there might be a concern with this issue, with this priority, the $250,000 capital grant to Forterra that we're asking for, if we were to consider adding Richard Pearson's additional language to be open to funding, or to request funding for acquisition opportunities at North Lake?
So...
Or at the warehouse or property.
Now, Aaron and Yarden, can you guys go back to the podium? My understanding is that the $250,000 for Forterra was not in our legislative agenda that Representative Pelliciotti picked up the ball on this, ran with it last legislative session, and was it, was this one of the items in the capital, proposed capital budget that passed the House?
Yeah, it was in one of the final capital budget documents, but it was not on our legislative agenda last year. This was a kind of a pet project of Representative Pelliciotti, and so, after, you know, kind of got going along, we've been supportive of it. So, obviously, capital budget didn't pass, so it's back on the agenda for 2018.
And I think the idea with this, just, and I think where Representative Pelliciotti was going, when we invited and asked Forterra to be involved in this, they are looking for a holistic solution to this. I think more to Richard's point is that if there's a, if there's a window of opportunity to capture more, to preserve more, we certainly want to, you know, we want to make sure that the language is, would be inclusive of that, if we can, if we can get that. So, we want to make sure we capture that 250, but if there's more out there, is there any way you could provide some language that would, that would accomplish that?
Yeah, I'd want to coordinate with Pelliciotti, Representative Pelliciotti, and Forterra also, to make sure that's all in what they're doing.
I mean, if I understand Mr. Pearson's request now, it's, if I understand him correctly, it's not asking that there be more funding, it's just that the request be broadened so that they're not just focusing on North Lake, but on the whole project. And in truth, although the city's been focused on North Lake, Forterra has actually been focused on the whole campus. So, I don't think, in answer to the deputy mayor's question, I don't think that it would change anything, but I, that's a policy question for city council.
It's more inclusive?
Yeah.
The language. Council, anything on this? Councilmember Honda?
I think it's an amazingly great idea, and I would have liked to have seen it months ago, so I'd go for it. As much of the property as we can keep as it is for the public to use in the future, we should do it.
Councilmember Burridge?
Just one more quick question. Do you happen to know whether the revenue for the algae grants still comes from the boat license revenue?
We were just, we were just looking at that. But yes, I'm pretty sure it does.
Okay. Thank you.
So, yeah, we were just, Mr. Flagler and I, we're just looking at the statute. So, the statute says that the money's directed to the account from RCW 88.02.640 is deposited into that account, and then 88.02.640 has, can you explain this?
Yeah, I mean, it has a bunch of different funding sources in it, but, yeah, I mean, it comes from boat licensing fees, title applications, I mean, it's a, it's a whole list in this, in this section, so.
Thank you.
Mayor, the one last thing I wanted to add about the agenda is, we have our agenda items, but there are probably 10 or 15 issues that we work on during a session that are not included on the agenda that come up like small cell towers, right? That was something we were working on this last session, so I just wanted to, you know, add that also.
Right. Okay. Council, any other questions or suggestions? All right. Council, you know, this will be on the, on the agenda for December 5th, and in the meantime, before that time, if you would like to see an amendment or a change, please communicate with myself, with Yarden, or legal counsel, and we'll get that on for, get language ready for possible action and amendment to the legislative document, to make sure that we're all ready to go, or we can do it at the dais, whatever your pleasure. Yarden?
So, I just, should we be, are we being directed to prepare that amendment that Mr. Pearson had requested?
Let's prepare it, and then we'll have the council. Council, is there any feedback on this? Maybe you can help us with some general feedback in regard to Mr. Pearson's, Richard Pearson's suggestion about widening that scope. Like I said, and I think clearly, it's been my understanding that that has been Forterra's goal and pursuit all along, as with the North Lake people, but that's something that they have done, I've said that repeatedly. But council, any objection to the adding of that language to make it more...
I was just going to say, if Forterra is doing that, we should be supportive of them.
We are. Yeah, absolutely.
So, and so, we could include that language then, in ours.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody. A great meeting, and any more, any more comment? All right. With that, this special meeting is adjourned.